Wisdom and guidance and unity of the U.S. In Jesus' name, amen.
A whole call. All five council members, all our press, if we have one. Approval of the agenda. Do you have one minor alteration agenda? It seems as though it's not maybe only late tonight, so it's hard to get any more work in the bottom.
Okay. Still the alteration that I want. Understood.
Second.
Bottom item of business. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Agenda approved. Since the comments, do you have any comments on this, Stacy?
No.
Right. Anyone from the audience right now? All of these individuals will move along to our consensus agenda, which includes the approval of our April 20 minutes as well as appropriations ordinance 1171.
I have one question regarding the appropriations ordinance. I have 28 for 89. If you could stake back $4,000, $300 for security cameras.
Yes, we purchased them to go on city buildings at the Baywatch Museum here at City Hall and also the Business Encavators just to keep an eye on those facilities for off-hours.
Did these cameras that they weren't using or...
Well, I'm sorry.
Are these cameras that they were not using or...
No, they're...
Any other questions on the consensus agenda? Very none, entertaining emotions to approve the consensus agenda.
I need that we approve the minutes and appropriations ordinance.
Second.
May move and second to approve consensus agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Consensus agenda approved. Moving along, looks like we do have one appointment to the Housing Authority.
Yes, we had a resignation a couple months ago and had a vacancy on that board and Mary Louise Tucker has volunteered to serve through the end of 2022 to fill that expired term.
I would think motion to approve Mary Louise Tucker to fill that expired term, Housing Authority.
May move and second to appoint Mary Louise Tucker to the Housing Authority for term ending in 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Appointment approved. Moving on to items of business. As it's become the new normal, start off with an update on that.
I'd like to invite Carrie to come and give an update on where we are today with the Governor's State Home Order firing and new phase approach for reopening the state and also what that looks like here in our town.
Good evening. Just going to share a few presentations that we have worked with Ray with emergency management and Dr. Cabarr to kind of come up with some guidelines for Kiowa County moving forward. As you know, it's kind of, it's a definite balancing act. We haven't seen a dramatic increase in cases personally, but our neighbors to the west definitely are. And so trying to ease back into, into life going forward, but then still maintaining a certain amount of precaution. So just baby steps, I guess we'll say, as we've kind of moved forward. So just wanted to share this plan with you. So, and this is just reiterating the fact that much like the Governor, we are trying to take a safe and stepwise approach. We will always use her executive orders and then you can go above and beyond the Governor's orders, but you can't go less than her orders this time. And so we're just kind of reiterating what conversations we had with business owners last week in preparation for opening up today. As Stacy said, this is kind of just going to be our new normal, just staying six feet away from others, interacting with people in the same household, of course, work is excluded from that, and then limiting all non-essential travel. There are some states that are looking at lifting their travel bans, but that doesn't include Kansas at this time, so we want to still be mindful of our travel. My recommendations as the health officer would be that masks should be worn in all public places, and we'll talk a little bit more about how that, that needs to be approached a little bit later on. Practicing good hand hygiene, just washing with soap and water. I know there's a lot of discussion about gloves and necessity to use them. Really, they can be more of a hindrance than a help, so our recommendation is just really good hand washing with soap and water, making sure that you get all the way up past your elbow or up past your wrist. Avoid touching your face. That's a really hard one for those of us who talk with our hands because they're always moving, so it's pretty easy to, yeah, just touch your face. Symptoms of COVID have been changed somewhat. We've started to see that people are more asymptomatic, meaning they're not going to really feel like bogged down with like a flu type symptom. What, what they're seeing more now is a headache, which can kind of be confused with a sinus infection sometimes. Definitely losing the smell, smell and taste in your mouth or having a metallic taste in your mouth is, is another one that we're seeing a lot of in this area. So it does seem to be that the, the symptoms, I wouldn't say necessarily are evolving, but just that we're, we're learning more about it. So some things to be mindful of, but definitely a severe headache is one of the things to be watchful for in the first stages of the virus. And then just continuing that the high-risk population be diligent about staying, staying at home. So we broke this down. This is where we were at as of last week, so we're going to focus more on this second, right, you'll see, okay, on this second column here, which starts today. And basically, the recommendations are going to be very similar going through this, so I won't go through each one, but we would just, you know, recommend that workers be screened for COVID symptoms, fever, nausea, anything like that. Recommending that employees should wear masks when social distancing cannot be maintained. So, and like I said, we'll discuss that a little bit further. Working from home or telecommunicating is advised by the Governor, so the Commissioners did decide to go ahead and extend the county order until May 18th. We'll revisit a little bit before that time. And common areas such as your break rooms and lobbies should all be closed. We just want to try to avoid any places where people are going to congregate during this phase. And I'm sorry, you did see, it is still 10 people or less. Hopefully in two weeks, we can move up to 30. That's the goal. So restaurants were able to open today, and we did discuss the strategies going forward, just wanting to see enhanced cleaning and sanitation and having hand sanitizer available on, on, by the cash register and different areas like that. Being mindful about doors and things that you're going to touch all the time, the backs of chairs. Encourage that even reservations could be, possibly be taken at some of our, our places that maybe have a smaller capacity, because we, we do still have to maintain six feet of distancing, so six feet in one facility is going to allow a lot more people in it than six feet in another facility. So just kind of keeping those things in mind. And having marks on the floor so people know where to stand. And this is one thing that is specific to our county. Beverages are allowed in their original containers, but we're not allowing soda fountains at this time. We are seeing a lot of overflow traffic and we, we want to stop that or keep stopping that idea of people touching soda fountains and things like that, so that all drinks have to be served by, by an employee. So it's basically the same thing for retail, retail businesses, and as you'll see on here, it is a working draft because everything with this virus has pretty much changed daily. And so just felt like we needed to have it as a working draft because as the needs change, if something, if something crazy happened here and we needed to adjust it, we would need to have the ability to do so. So this is a working draft. We will be looking at this and reevaluating this constantly, but this just kind of gives some guidance for us. Again, the same, the same thing. The one thing that we're asking is that no gatherings or classes be allowed in any of the downtown businesses. Per the state guidelines, salons and barber shops are not allowed to be open, so that was, that was a change as well. And recreational activities at this point are not allowed. That is a discussion kind of being held. Rec teams are able to practice if social distancing can be maintained and if proper sanitation of the equipment can be used. I don't know what that looks like with a group of preschoolers trying to throw a baseball and what are you, are you sanitizing it in between? So we left it as to be determined because that really is, it, it's going to be a tricky thing to kind of navigate how, how do you sanitize that kind of stuff and, and keep them distanced? Oh, there we go. Parks, public spaces and playground equipment. This is one that I definitely defer to Dr. Cabarr on because, you know, the life cycle of the virus and all of those things, so I really appreciated his, his input and help with this. Parks and public spaces were never closed to the public. However, as you know, we did ask to barricades the equipment to keep people off that. There's no way to sanitize that. And how could you sanitize that on, on a constant basis with people using it? So his recommendation was that we develop just a sign saying, you know, due to, to the increased COVID awareness, you know, know that you're basically kind of saying, you're taking your own risk by playing on this and you need to be responsible for your own sanitation while you're there. Swimming pools at this point, per the state guidelines, are still closed. And community events, we are still, we must still adhere to the 10-person rule, so still can't have more than 10 people in a social gathering. That should say churches when it's not being cut off. So I, I outlined some guidance for churches and just emailed this out to the Ministerial Alliance, but it's, it hasn't really changed. Churches were never closed and they should remain open. It's just a matter of putting in those proper practices to make sure that we're protecting people as they, as they come in and out. And of course, wearing masks. You'll, you'll hear me say that a lot, wearing masks. Everyone is going to be wearing masks. The soda fountain is able to reopen as long as the number of people are limited in the store. So again, we'd have to allow for social distancing along the, the counter and then mark off every other booth, but the soda fountain could be open. I thought maybe there was magic. Here we go. Library. The library in this phase can be open, however, it is up to the Director of the Library as to how that phase wants to go. I know Cassie's developed a really great plan as far as how to tackle this, because with every venue comes different challenges on how to, how to handle, you know, the transmission of the virus. So her and I discussed it today, and I think she's going to go towards like a curbside service for the next couple of weeks to where we can kind of see where, where this is going to go, but, but having the ability to, for people to utilize the library services again will be a, a really great benefit for the town, for the community. Guidance for wearing a mask. So this just goes in general. You're going to be hearing a lot of people saying it's just good practice to, to get in the habit of wearing masks. This is something that's not going to be going away. As we've said many times, we're, we're going to be looking at this virus for quite a long time, and so if you're going to be around other people, you should be wearing a mask. So if social distancing of six feet can be maintained and it's your personal private space, like I'm in my own office, I don't wear a mask, but if I go out of my office or somebody else comes into my office, they need to be wearing a mask. If you're looking over the same document or the same computer, need to be wearing a mask. If you're going into an office or room that's not your own, you need to be wearing a mask. If you're in the hallway or stairway, bathrooms, any of those common spaces where you might be touching something that someone else has and it hasn't been sanitized in between, need to be wearing a mask. And so really, if you're in public at all, a mask should be worn. And that was just a little message I put out there for the, for the county employees, but I think it kind of goes for all of us. I mean, it being a part of the essential functions of a county, it is our responsibility to, to put those things in place to stay well. Definitely not a requirement. I'm not going to be walking around forcing you to wear a mask, but I would just strongly encourage it when you can socially distance. So that was, that was what we discussed this morning, Commissioners. Any questions?
I have a question on the masks.
Yes.
Number one, I know that it's hard to find disposable masks right now. So is there a place in the community that people can pick them up? Do you have those or...
All of our resources have been going to support the health department, or the hospital and the care center, so we are encouraging people to look at homemade masks, and we do have some of those in our office.
Okay, and that's my second question. How often should those homemade masks be laundered? Is it like a daily?
Every day.
Every day?
So you should at least have a couple to where you could wear one throughout the day and have a backup in a plastic baggie just in case something happens. Like if somebody were to cough directly in your face, you'd want to change out your mask right away.
Yeah.
But just for normal wear, you could wear it throughout the day and then just wash it and let it air dry at night.
Okay. There's were a couple of questions that I had gotten and...
Yeah, I know. It, it's a pretty common question. The other one is hand sanitizer. I know that that's pretty impossible to get in stores. We were able to secure several gallons of it from Boot Hill Distillery, so if you have a container, you can bring it into our office and refill it for free. We just want to try to share that sanitizer with as many people as possible if you're going to use it. So, you know, something to keep in mind there as well. The next phase should, if all goes well and everything fits into this, this parameter that the Governor set, the next phase will begin May 18th, and then we can move up to about 30 people in a group, and some of the other restrictions are going to be lessened a little bit.
Other questions, Karen? Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. All right, thanks.
If you want to have another discussion, you guys want to as how we want to alter or if we want to alter how the city, the city's currently operating, the pandemic, or continue what we've been doing the last few weeks or the next couple of weeks.
At this time, the Big Wall Museum could not open under the Governor's plan, but City Hall could, and where we see just local traffic pretty much, we could put measures into place, having some kind of cough guard, sneeze shield for Selena, putting a mark on the floor six feet, really trying to limit contact if you chose to open it back up to the public. But as far as the Big Wall Museum, that's not a facility that can be opened at this time anyway, under the Governor's framework.
Are you having issues with being closed and everything runs still relatively smooth?
Yeah, yeah. People have been able to make their payments online or in the Dropbox. We've had a few things come in that we've gone out to the back door, but even we've had some online permits. Really, I don't think we've seen any major disruptions at all.
Any other more from the following, as you continue to assess your actions?
Seems like a consensus. So continue for the next two weeks as we have the last several.
I thought that would have been a problem to people for two weeks.
No, I think we've been really able to operate business as usual.
Okay, questions? Is this any other discussion on this topic?
Here none. We will move along on to item of business number three, ordinance 1096.
In review of our city code for something else, we came across a section that outlines the code of procedure for Kansas cities, and I asked Christie if we had this document filed somewhere, and it cited the 2006 version is the version we were using and that was adopted in our code in 2007, so some time ago. Anyway, we found on the League's website where to order the new copies to have on file of the latest version, which is 2017, and also the Handbook for Effective Meetings. And these are really procedural on how meetings run here versus Robert's Rules of Order. It's a little bit different of motions and all of that. So if we ever were to have a question procedurally, how a meeting ran, this is what we would go to, to figure that out. And so this basically just amends our city code to be current with this new version that we have on file. And it will also change, the ordinance will change that as new versions come available, we don't have to pass an ordinance. To make that change, it can be passed by resolution to make that update.
I need to approve ordinance number 1096.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 1096, updating our codes of procedure. Any further discussion? Ordinance will call vote. Councilman Little.
Yeah.
Macbeth.
Yes.
Trummel.
Yes.
Kern.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Anything else on that? Pretty just kind of a tidying up business item, so we'll move along to our next item of business, which is consider purchase of a 2016 Dodge Charger from the Sheriff's Department or Police Department.
Good evening. I have an opposed by the Sheriff's Office regarding a vehicle they are getting rid of. It's a 2016 Dodge Charger, police pursuit vehicle. It has approximately 107,000 miles on it, and they said they would sell it to the city for $7,000. That includes all the emergency lighting and light controls sirens, also includes the prisoner partition and then the gun rack for the vehicle. Just for a little bit of comparison, Kansas Highway Patrol sells used vehicles. A lot of agencies use theirs. They sell them at approximately 50,000 to 60,000 miles on them, and they sell them for $21,100 for a Dodge Charger with the emergency lights. That would not come with a gun rack or prisoner partition, and those would be about $1,500 to purchase. The additional cost if we were to purchase a vehicle would include upgrading it with all of all the equipment. The equipment would come out of the current vehicle and be moved over. JR Audio out of Garden City is who upgraded the current vehicle, and I've contacted them to get the state price quote on that. To remove all of our existing equipment and reinstall it in the new vehicle with all the cabling and whatnot would be about $1,500, and that also includes adding side lighting. One thing about the sheriff vehicles is they do not really have any lights on the side of them for like intersection visibility. That would add lights to the side windows and then also under the mirror just to give better visibility, so you don't get hit if you're blocking the intersection or something like that. And then the other thing that would have to be is graphics on the vehicle. The graphics we have on the Crown Vic are just very basic lettering graphics. If we were to purchase a new vehicle, it'd be something that would be better visually appealing. It would be, the Charger is white, so it'd be a black background, and then say City of Greensburg Police, and then have our badge on it as well. The cheapest car I got from that was Mork Signs out of Great Bend. They have a good reputation for doing law enforcement vehicles, and they came in significantly cheaper than the two other options I contacted out of Wichita. They do two different styles. The non-reflective would be $700. The reflective is $1,050. The biggest difference is going to be your nighttime visibility. The reflective, when headlights hit it, it shines back at you pretty good, but they're both going to be visible at night, and it's going to be a lot more visible than the graphics we currently have on our patrol car. My recommendation, I've taken a look at the Charger. I've test drove it, and I've had Danny with City Maintenance look at it as well, would be to purchase it from the county and then do the upfitting with JR Audio and Mork Signs for the graphics for a total cost of $9,200. And then as far as budget goes for that, we still have money in the police fund and that contract money that was set aside for a possible dispatch contract, which was never put into place. Had $20,000 in that after the Digi ticket for the year, we'll still be sitting at about $14,000 in that budget.
What do we do with the old car when we decide to do this? And how long does it take to make the switch from the stuff in the old car to the...
JR Audio said they could make the switch in 10 to 12 hours, so it'd be a one day out there in Garden City, just because most of the car is already wired, and they would just be adding those additional lights in and then moving the radios and stuff over. And then for the graphics, they said it'd be a day or two, so it'd be about three day, four day, somewhere around there. As far as the old car, it'd kind of be up to you guys what we want to do with it. It could either be retained, I mean, it's a vehicle that's, we don't owe any money on or anything like that, could be used for a different purpose, or it could be sold on, like Sheriff's Office, they normally sell their vehicles on Purple Wave and put them up for auction.
How long have you had that vehicle, just from the beginning, right?
Yes, from when the department was established, and it was purchased used. It's a 2011.
How many miles does it have on it?
Right under 90,000.
If we could sell the old car, the proceeds we get from it could go toward the purchase of this.
Yes.
To not, to go back into that budget.
Is mine done a lot to have on a police vehicle?
Not necessarily. It's one of those where the vehicle's just showing its age a little bit, and then the Charger's just newer with more law enforcement options, things like that. As far as mechanically goes, there's nothing wrong with the Crown Vic.
Our current car's just not too long ago been completely rebuilt.
Yeah.
I only ask that question because, you know, for years we've gone back to it as to possibly having another officer or a part-time officer, and we have a car that's still in good shape, has all this stuff, you know, would we want to go ahead and sell it or would we go into it? I mean, we're not there yet, but...
We've also talked about it, would we replace that car? We looked at, we discussed, make, pick up a four-wheel drive vehicle or something.
Yes. Earlier this year when I first started, I did reach out to Davis Moore on a quote because their Dodge is the biggest law enforcement vehicle anymore. For a Dodge Ram, like what Sheriff Ketter has, a police package is $32,500. That we simply could again consider in the future, but like Ms. Kern said, future growth is a possibility for the department, so the Charger would be a good purchase, and my recommendation would just be to sell the Crown Vic, and then if we do grow, we can move that officer into the Charger and then myself into a pickup at that time.
Well, Council, the proposal's in front of you to purchase the Sheriff's Office Charger. We can go ahead and approve that now. We can get more information, whatever you guys want to do on it.
I feel like you've covered all the bases as far as quotes and that's on, you know, whatever. I do know that the Crown Vic, when we bought it, it was somebody else that realized it had a lot of miles on it and everything. To me, this sounds pretty reasonable, the price.
Yeah, price-wise, in half as many miles as what we're currently using.
I, myself, I wouldn't be opposed to make this, but, but make this purchase.
I like the idea of new graphics, too, and be a nice, uh, yeah. So that'd be one of the things as far as input from you guys, if you'd want to use the non-reflective graphics for the 700 or pay the extra a little over $1,000, $1,050 for reflective graphics. It's going to be the same design either way. The design would start at the front of the door and go backwards as a black wrap, and then it'll say City of Greensburg Police, and then it has a line on there about serving the community.
Is, is there a possibility, rather than getting rid of this old car, we could have it as, I know you're going to take some stuff out, but would it be able to be used as a backup in case?
Absolutely.
This one broke down or something?
Absolutely. We can either, the radar and camera system, I would recommend taking out because to replace those items would be about $10,000 for the watch guard system that we use along with the stalker radar. The radios, we could leave into the vehicle. That way, if we need to use it for a different purpose, it still has radios in it. I can replace the radios for about $2,500 in the new vehicle. And then the lights and sirens, if we pulled them out, we'd have to pull them out if we sold it, but they wouldn't be reused in the Charger since it's already upgraded with lights.
So it's going to be stripped down, the old cars pretty much, right then?
Just the radar and camera system will need to come out for sure. If we decide to keep it, we can leave the radios in it and purchase additional radios for the new vehicle. And then if we decide to replace the vehicle in the future with a truck or whatnot, those radios could be moved over at that time.
And we can always go ahead and purchase the new vehicle if Council is okay with that, and then leave the ultimate decision on the old vehicle for another day if we want it aside, so.
Well, back to the reflective material, I would be in favor of spending $1,500 on that for your safety and, and...
Yeah.
To be noticeable in the evening, you know, at night.
I feel like that's a good investment.
Yeah, just an extra few hundred dollars, definitely.
And we can always go ahead and purchase the new vehicle if counsel is okay with that, and then leave the ultimate decision on the old vehicle for another day if we wanted to decide, so.
Well, back to the reflective material, I would be in favor of spending $1,500 on that for your safety and
Yeah.
to be noticeable in the evening, you know.
I feel like that's a good investment.
Yeah, just an extra few hundred dollars, definitely.
I make the motion that we approve the purchase of a Dodge Charger from the County Sheriff's Department for $9,200.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the purchase and outfitting of the Sheriff's Office Charger from the County Sheriff's Department. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like Mr. Stotts is here, so we'll go ahead and come back around to that agenda item for the consideration of the city taking over water lines on his property.
Mr. Stotts sounds pretty impressive there.
Like to be formal.
This is a very, very, very rough diagram of the water system on the southern part of what was Fiemerville. And I talked with Mr. Mick, and of course, he knows more about this than I do. The system, you know, I mean, it was put in. I have had water clear through the whole system for next permission. But what I'm proposing, or less than I are proposing, is if the city would like to take the water system, we would love to have it. We do not have the expertise. We see a benefit for our community, but that's going to be up to you. The side issue, and I'm just going to present the idea, on block 21 and 22, looks to me like that would be a really good place to put a potential mobile home park. Once again, don't have the expertise. If either the city or if you know a party would be interested, we would sure work with them. But anyway, the water is the main proposal, so.
Questions for Roger, counsel? I guess I do have a couple of questions, just for clarification. Currently, this property's not within city limits, correct?
It's all county, that's right.
It's all county? Typically, the city's preference is to only operate utilities within
I'm respectful of that.
city limits. The other just idea would be, if we did do this, want to make sure we have proper easements in right of way, so that
Correct.
if we needed to work on these, we could.
Yep. And we've sold, like, block 10 to Isaac Bergen. He's going to build a house down there, put something down there. And he will put a well in, and I told him that the possibility of water, I made no promises. He would be very interested. He understands the easements. We have another block that we have sold, don't have finished up. They also understand and have interest in another block. And so everybody understands. The streets, we went to the county last year and got most of the streets vacated, just so we could clarify who had control of. And the street of Mockingbird and Oak Street, the county left open, and at any time, we can go back and would assume that they would open them back up. But we just wanted to get clarification of who was responsible for it. And so if the city was willing to take over, Mick said there would be some things that would need like right of way. You just tell us what we need. You can either have the document or we can have it drawn up. Because we just, I can see a real benefit for the community, but.
And most of these lines have sat unused for well over a decade. Am I correct in that?
It's been a while, yes.
Do we have any idea or indication of what shape they're in today?
I had water pressure on all of them about two weeks ago. Now, the things that I have not got done, there's two-inch lines where they went underneath all the homes, and I have not got all the valves shut off, and I've yet to find one. We're real close, but we did have to get back to the day job, so. But that is one thing that Mick asked we do. But I have had water clear through the whole system. There's three fire hydrants that are, the valves are turned off. One of them, a mower took out. Another one's loose, another one I don't know. And then the water hydrant by Mr. Reddick, the valve is turned off yet. I believe there was a leak several years ago, but you're right. It hasn't been, but when I pressured it up, there were no leaks anywhere. The, I think it's the third line over, the fourth line over from the west. When I opened up south, I did not get any pressure, did not get any water, and I thought, oh, boy. So I went up. The second one from the north, and that was airlocked, because I opened it up, and I had water that went through the whole system. And then I shut it back off after we had it. So I didn't leave it on for extended time. So no guarantees, but it appears good shape.
And just, I think you mentioned this, but Mockingbird and Oak Streets are still open, but all others have been vacated and are now private property?
No, right. That's right.
Okay. Well, that's another consideration. Typically, the city, when we operate utilities, we're only, they're only located on
Oh, I understand.
So that's something we consider.
And we hope you do, and if you don't, I mean, it's not going to change anything. It's just, it's an asset that could be a benefit. And then the presentation as far as a mobile home park, I mean, our community needs it for entry level. Once again, if somebody wants, we're sure to do everything we can to help. And then, of course, we've got a septic system down there. Lift station is tied to the city, and I believe Mr. Kendall's made a real point, he's not interested in tying into that. But once again, if somebody took over the mobile home park, it's available. You know, we're not hoping to benefit from this. We just think it's a benefit, could be a benefit for the community.
Well, Mick, your assessment of the system and the feasibility of this?
Well, we're going to have to do some back T-sam when we take it over. We're going to have to properly coordinate it and then take back T-samples. There is some part, we need to be, well, one of them definitely needs to be replaced, and the other two need to be looked at a little more. I'll look through the samples that go up on the other end and off. And then, I mean, I don't know that it's a bad thing, but once we take it over, we've got to make sure it's protected.
Yeah.
The tendency would be if it could pass back T-sam.
Well, and that might be an option, is have an arrangement where we take those samples before we agree to take it over, just so we know.
How at all would that be, and what kind of cost?
Well, we're going to dig down and put a tap in somewhere close to the entry of the water, and build up a grain of chlorine in there and give it a toss again, kill it or anything. It's been set at least vacant for 10 years, and probably it is seen under the top, so it's not, not why I would set there any pockets to throw stuff, but and then, like Roger said, there's another valve we need to buy and possibly another one we can't solve. I have been knocked out there hoping that to see if it kills it going that direction. The issue with the whole deal was at the beginning, is when people put it in, they wouldn't let us own the property, so.
Don't know where anything's at.
Well, Roger found a lot of it, so we've done an album, and we did, 14 years ago, we put it in, we didn't have any.
Yeah.
I mean, it's valve, the height of all that valve, it's, the water system's done fairly, I mean, it's okay. If it's looped all the way around, it'd be better, but I don't know that it is, but that's the valve. I need to turn it off and go, see if I got water at the high end, so.
Because the drawing that Mick has isn't quite what's out there. And it shows that the water lines stop at the south end, but there's some other valves. And it shows in the northwest corner, the results aren't quite what it says, so. But the whole system, though, I was pleased, because the whole thing pressured up. The only leak I had was on a two-inch line, the only one we can't find the valve on, and had a leak on one fire hydrant that I thought the valve was turned off to, and that's where we're talking. It's not quite, but it, I was pretty pumped. I mean, really. Turn it on, no leaks, everything works, and I mean, I had strong pressure clear to south end, and only had rusty water that came out of one fire hydrant out of the whole deal.
How would you, is that, the water that goes from there goes through the treatment plant?
There's a treatment plant, I think it's out there.
Yeah.
It's all, it's hooked to our system out there off Scott Street.
It already is hooked to our system.
Yeah, it's been hooked up to the system.
And so that water, if somebody moves out there and they have that, how's that going to affect our water rights for here in the city with it, or is it incorporated already?
Well, it's all part of it. It's, they're not going to be bringing the water to add to one family's or town.
Oh, okay.
Nobody on all of the streets on city water, are they?
No.
As far as being out there in that area?
No.
On all of it?
Yeah.
When you pass
Past, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the first house is on, that was Jason Wink's place, and the next block, that's on city water. That comes from leader behind Gary and Heather, and it's all good for us.
But if anybody out there wanted to get on city water, if they had well problems, they could then, if we had this system.
We like Stan and Reddick.
Stan, yeah, Reddick.
That's an option.
Because everybody to the west has well problems, right? Or have had?
Do I all the other?
Mick, where does the water tie in along the north end? Does it come from the alley where we ran into that Oak Street house, or does it come in front of the house?
It comes straight down the ditch.
Down the ditch.
Straight tap out, we set off on the right side, we go straight over and go to Scott Street.
Okay.
Phil Hayes ran that.
Well, we ran it down the, did we not run it down the alley?
We went down just past Jennings.
Mm-hmm.
Put, and then teed over.
And then went to Oak Street, and then went south.
We're hiding all the houses on Main Street.
Okay.
All their water comes in from the backside running down that. But there's sewer line around that house.
I understand, but I wasn't sure on the east side where the water was going to that house, to Mr. Jennings' house.
It's on his side, it's
But is it in the alley?
No.
Okay, it's not, okay.
Sewer is, the water lies in front of it.
Okay.
Other questions or comments, counsel?
I seem to have to know something.
I don't have to know anything. I mean, really. We're good yesterday, we're good tomorrow. And from the get-go, I've never, you know, always told everybody, there's possibility of getting water, but no guarantee. And I said, Mr. Mick is in charge of it. But it, it really makes me no difference. I think it's a benefit, could be a benefit to the community, which is not our cup of tea.
Well, what I'd say, if counsel is just open to the concept of this perhaps, we would probably want to move forward with getting some questions answered before we go forward.
That's right.
We probably have two different easement or rights-of-way issues to look at. One is, we'll probably have to go to the county to get permission for the roads that have not been vacated, if there are still lines under those, and also need to get permission for whatever lines we take that are still, that are on your property, that are on the roads that have been vacated. And maybe worth it, do you think it'd be worth it to do some of those tests before we take it over, just for peace of mind? Because if there is a problem, you know, what's the remediation going to cost? That's my question.
Yeah, you better all find that, go back, back T-sam for the check.
So, yeah, so if we're open to it, we probably want to do that before we move forward with the two, but.
I'm good, whatever. If anything we can do to help, let me know.
We appreciate you bringing this opportunity to us, but to
Thank you. So, if you have any questions, let me know, but really, anything we can do. And then on the potential mobile, it's just an idea. Once again, I think our community needs that. If there's something that anybody you guys propose or anything, notify, because we just happen to have the asset. We just don't have that condition to do.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll kick the idea around and let you know if we want to pursue it anyway.
Good, good seeing you all, thank you.
Well, counsel, before we move on, do we want to move forward with any of these tests, exploring any of the rights-of-way issue, or do you want to kind of chew on it before we come back to it for a while?
Well, it sounds like if those tests don't pass, we really
Yeah.
everything's kind of depending on that, so maybe we should be up first.
Do we know what the tests would cost to do?
Back T's aren't cheap. I don't know exactly what to go on, because they're all a little cheap. Problem is, when we start taking back T-samples, KDA T-samples get a little more. So then, then, what I said, the back T-sam, when it comes back positive, we've got post upon it, we've got to notify people.
Even though it's not our system yet?
Get someone to please make it. But I reckon best we bring you guys to water.
If we took this on too, would we be better off to annex this property into the city limits?
That's what I was wondering.
I mean, if we got to maintain the water lines and stuff.
Again, as a general principle, we try to only operate utilities within city limits, so that could be a condition as well.
Before long, we're running a water line two miles out of town, you know, for somebody.
We already do have two locations where we have water and sewers that are outside the city limits that we have customers on. So that there is some precedent there of that we already do have that, but yes.
And again, my concern too, with a large portion of these lines running over roads that have been vacated, so it's private property now. If we were to take responsibility for those lines, we would need, again, detailed easements, rights-of-way, to give us permission to repair them, dig them up and repair them if we needed to. But we need to know exactly where they're at, which means we probably need to have it surveyed professionally. And that itself is also not cheap. So just
I think we need to find people about this.
This, it's an interesting proposal, but there are cans of worms, plural, involved with it.
I mean, it sounds great to have this off the table, but we're working on something that's not even in our yard.
It'd be different if we had a proposal in front of us for somebody willing to come in and put in a mobile home park, and they had that all lined out, and then this would be something that we could talk about.
Specifically.
We don't have that. This is all just a
Speculation.
Yeah, so to put in the money.
There's probably seven to nine thousand dollars of comparison to be done out there.
And that doesn't include the testing, correct?
Yeah, that's just the fire items.
What about all the taps? Would they be an issue?
All two of us have valves on, so you kill them. They run from north to the south. That's what we've kind of figured out all the way down.
So they fed all the trailers off of the two-inch line off of the six?
Down each, yeah.
Each block?
Where they're split, you know, they're two on the back and back, and it's split.
I agree with you, Mick, about the loop idea. Having deadhead Have they deadhead, they're on the south end?
Have I been deadhead on the far south end? I don't know yet, I haven't. It's really happened.
You can isolate that. If somebody wanted to build something out there, be able.
It's okay.
On the far south end and they have a problem, we got to shut them off somewhere.
Right, that's it. But we, we do that, I mean, that happens all the time. We've got, we've got lines that are totally looped in town.
That aren't looped?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's really not a big issue. The only deal is, is a lot of times we'll stretch the analysis on those lines. If they're deadhead like that, they don't get enough flow through. So the chlorine system goes down, we have to run water out of fire items to get the chlorine system back up. That's just because we don't have many people pulling off of those in the East.
Would this, would this create more of a load at the water treatment plant?
The UC can have it much more.
I mean, there's nobody out there who's not using it.
You're looking at one customer right now. So you're not going to increase that one, believe me.
Well, again, counsel, probably best to think about this for a while, maybe revisit it at a future meeting. But again, if we do move forward with it, we probably do have some questions that need to be answered before we do.
How much could our water pump, if I could, take if we needed to do some work, counsel?
Well, that's the other part of it is, again, if we have several thousand repairs plus testing.
I say, then I think I'd put a proposal, put a proposal, you basically repaired it for the day.
Well, it's fair because it's an existing problem of what is now his property.
I hate to buy a dead horse.
I think as well, do you want to water? We'll comment six about that.
Is there a way that he can just tap that section off or take all that pipe out? Or, I mean, if we don't accept it, can, is there a way to say, okay, you can do whatever you want with the pipes, we don't want your water? I mean, your, your distribution.
We don't want the distribution to wait for water.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Is there a way that they can do that?
Well, it's shut off right now.
Oh, well, then there is.
The whole thing is shut off.
Yeah, on our side.
Oh, okay.
Uh, where we got used to it stops, it's shut off. Because I put the valve in there, the female wouldn't let me in on the property, so I just, yeah, I put the valve there, took the water off.
Okay.
And that would be an option, you know, if you did want, if there was going to be development out there, but we did want to take possession of the distribution system, we could just put a meter on that six-inch line and say, right, everything on that outside is, we can't.
We still allow that water to come through.
Okay.
So like, get sick and then.
That's true.
And then you could, then anybody could go out and, and he could sell the water after we sold it to him if he did. And that could cause a lot of problems with their water treatment plant.
We don't want that, we don't want the water.
I think it takes some time to absorb this a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll table this for discussion another day. Encourage you, if you think of any other questions for Mick or Roger or Stacy, just go ahead and bring them in and we'll think about it until another day. All right. Moving along. Now we are on to item number five, local business support.
Been pondering an idea for council consideration with the last almost two months, I guess, of the pandemic going on and businesses either closed or limiting operations or having to find other ways to operate. How the city could be supportive? I've heard lots of stories of cities around Kansas doing various things to try to support their communities. But on the flip side of that, trying to be budget conscious, knowing that potentially we could see some revenue hits because of this. But what can we do to help our local businesses? And one tool that the chamber has is big well bucks, which are chamber bucks that can be spent at local businesses, basically like cash, within businesses in Kiowa County. So I had Selena look up how many residential electric meters we have right now, just to get kind of an idea of how many households in the community we have. And it's about four hundred and twenty-five. And what that might look like if we were to give every residential household ten dollars in big well bucks that could be spent here locally within the community at local businesses. So that would be about four hundred, four thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar price tag. And then if we mailed it out, the postage that would be needed to do that, to send that in an envelope to every household in the community. But just as a way to inject a little money into our local economy that also in turn would help us through sales tax revenue that does help the city in this time of kind of crazy economic pandemic. So, just for discussion.
Do we accept big well bucks?
I, I think we sure could. I mean, basically, how it works is you take them to St. John Grisford State Bank and they treat it as a five-dollar bill and deposit it, and then it comes out of the chamber account. So, we would initially purchase them from the chamber, give them out, and then the resident would buy something somewhere. And then that business owner can take them to the bank to be changed out then as cash.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I think we ought to wait a little bit, do it, let some of these other businesses open up so that one or two businesses in town don't get the whole bit of benefit.
Yeah, and with this phase approach.
I'd need every business in town to have a chance to.
Because really, today's the first day with the governor's new plan. And so maybe we wait two weeks for phase two.
Is that, is that when electric bills are going out?
Electric bills go out about the twenty-second, I believe is the date. The problem with that is we use a billing company that sends them out, so.
Getting included in there.
Yeah. We're not hand stuffing envelopes here and sending them out.
I love the idea. I think not only does it get people spending some money at local businesses, they're probably not just going to walk in and send ten dollars. They're probably going to spend fifteen or twenty or thirty dollars. So it's going to get people in the world to some of these places. And maybe just raise some awareness of these big well bucks even exist. I know a lot of people have no idea what they are. You know, I've given them gifts before and people don't know what it is. I'm like, it's like that, you have to spend it three years for her to.
Yeah.
So I, I love the idea. It's a little something that we can do that's not going to kill us. There's, what, of the Kansas City, or out of Kansas City Gardener paid all the way to the wheels, you know? And that would, that would hurt us.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Go home and turn the water on.
We did that crap very hard. But, I don't know, personally, I think it's a really nice gesture to be a member of the city and help citizens in businesses at a minimal cost.
I haven't spoke to the chamber board yet, but I'm going to float the idea of matching it to make it twenty dollars. So, I'll talk to them this week. If this is something you want to do, I'll try to do that too.
Hearing general consensus that I think it's a good idea, maybe wait a couple few weeks before we go ahead and send them out, but.
Second phase, we see what opens up, definitely. Possibly everybody can get a benefit, not just one, two places, you know?
Not that hard, but that's, you're a hundred percent right.
Well, my city, visiting change the water.
Yeah.
But then without a package.
And in the meantime, you want to check Villains. One time I got some big well bucks, they didn't accept.
Yeah, I think there's also going to be a business reeducation process. I know at Christmas time for the city employees, we also did that. And I think Danny Schrant was our personal big well bucks business educator. Because he spent five dollars at a time. I think he went to almost every place in town just to see who would take them.
Good for you.
So I think that there would probably be a check, would be a check in at Family Dollar and Villains and with our downtown businesses, just that reeducation of this is what it looks like. Yes, you can take it, here's what you do with it.
So, do we want to maybe have this on the agenda for next meeting? Or do you want to go ahead and prove it and just say, you know, don't send them out for a few weeks?
I think we wait till the next meeting. We'll know a lot more about everything that's happening by then.
Okay.
But I like the idea in general.
So, yeah, we'll just have it on the agenda for, for next meeting. Any other discussion on that item? Moving on to city staff reports. Stacy?
Yes. On the thirtieth, the governor signed an executive order that basically extended most of her executive orders that she previously issued. And one of those is Order 2005 temporarily prohibiting utility disconnections due to non-payment. That has been extended now through May thirty-first. In April, you approved to waive the application of the ten percent late charge on the April utility billing cycle. And I just wanted to give you a report on some numbers of our delinquent accounts, late payment accounts for March and April of 2019 and 2020. Just so you can compare what a normal year last year looks like versus now. And one thing I will note is, in these numbers, there are some people that have multiple accounts if they have multiple electric meters or water meters, so it'll show up. There's a few of them that they're kind of doubling up on some of those numbers. And most of these, in fact, almost all have paid. So they're not delinquent to a point where these people are never paying. They're just past that tenth deadline of when we apply the late charge and consider them delinquent. So for March of nineteen, there were fifty-seven accounts. And March of this year, there were sixty-six, so a little increase. And then April of nineteen was forty-nine, and April of this year is actually forty-seven. So we saw a decrease from last year in April. So we'll see what the next month brings. May tenth will be the next billing cycle due date. Even though we have not been doing the disconnect notices, we have been continuing to follow up with customers by letter to make sure that they understand that, yes, this order is in place and you can't be shut off, but you do still have a bill to pay. Please pay what you can, when you can, understanding that right now could be financial hardship for some of our customers. But we have still seen people continue to pay. And as you can see, those numbers are pretty consistent with what a normal monthly billing cycle really looks like. The KDOT Cost Share Grant has been submitted and received, and they hope to announce the awardees by the end of June for those grants. So hopefully, that will turn out favorably for us. We received our annual Kansas Municipal Safety Group Insurance rebate check. Being part of that group, every year we get a rebate, and this year was fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So that was nice to receive that last week. And some, more flowers have been planted downtown in some of the flower planter boxes. And then last Friday, last Friday was Arbor Day, and Mayor Matt planted a tree over here by Starlight Park and did a photo op for Arbor Day that we can post on our social media. The Arbor Day Foundation this year has relaxed some of their requirements to maintain your Tree City USA requirements. Typically, they want to have a tree planting ceremony and a group gathering, but because of what's going on right now, they've waived that. So we just took a picture of Mayor Matt and posted it so that we still did our tree planting for the year. The disc golf baskets have been sandblasted and painted by volunteers and are close to installation. The city, Mick has got the pipe that, for the baskets to go on. And so hopefully, installation of those will happen pretty soon in Davis Park. We notice, notices will be going out. We're working on identifying the properties that are starting to get a little high need mode. So our first notices will go out for that process for the season. And today is May fourth. It has been thirteen years since the tornado. And every year, we do some posting on our social media, and we have seen a lot of traffic today on our social media. Again, it's amazing, every year, the, the comments that people make and very supportive and interested still in what we're doing here in our community. And then Caitlin's also been doing some online sales of t-shirts and things at the Big Well Museum, trying to find some ways to still have a revenue stream there. And so she's taking orders and then shipping them out. And we've seen quite a bit of traffic today. She got some Ranger t-shirts in, and a lot of alumni all day have been ordering t-shirts, which is great. I think that's all I have to report. Chief Webb also has a report to give.
Eric?
All right. Included in your council packets, again, for month of April, I have included statistics for the department of what I've been up to. Not much traffic was ran in the month of April just due to COVID. You all part of practice social distancing. Still stop violators that were going in high excess of the speed limit. Total had fifty-seven calls for service, seventeen of those were traffic related. The other forty calls were just various as they broke down in your packet. With the assistance of the sheriff's office, we did do a series of search warrants here in town and the, and surrounding areas. In town, we did take free arrests and custody that I did, and then the sheriff's office did, and there was free arrests, all drug related. And then we also got warrants issued in Demanshee County, Edwards County, and Kingman County off search warrants we conducted. The MOU for DigiTicket has been approved by the county commissioners and signed. And then the contract has been signed with DigiTicket. However, after the fact, we did realize that there was one mistake in the contract. It doesn't change anything we approved. The type of mounting hardware they provided in the contract was incorrect. So that'll be re-signed and resubmitted to them, and they will get processed on designing our system. And we should again have it up to date in sixty to a hundred and twenty days. We'll be implementing it with the sheriff's office. Finally, with Symbol Wards is a company that does badges. I've been in contact with them, and I've included some different designs they provided in the council packets to update our badge to reflect more of the community image for Greensburg. On our shorter patch, it was actually a contest when the department was first started. It includes the big well and things like that. The badge has the big well on it. It'll be a metal badge, just like what we have now with the big well, kind of the focal point, and then the United States flag and the Kansas flag. Just wanted to get a little bit of council feedback on you guys' thoughts on that. My personal recommendation is the version number three in your packet. That's the design I like the most.
It's the one I like too.
It's a terrible for me to admit that I really can't see a difference between any three of them.
The biggest difference is the coloring. In the first design, the, the way we're currently set up when the department was established is administration has a gold badge, which is what I wear. And then if we grow and have officers, it's a silver badge. The silver badge just doesn't, in my opinion, stand out very well. So I had them kind of do two-tone badges on all of them. So the chief badge changed to the gold color. And then in the third design, it just has blue panels instead of silver. But just adding the big well and the eagle and stuff in there, just more visually appealing than what we currently have.
I think with that admission, I take myself out of the running of voting. Counsel, you have any preference?
I pretty much like all of them.
See the whole thing?
There's not a lot of them that I feel like I'd kick out.
Yeah. Basically, the same design is the same. Like, I just changed the color schemes. As long as counsel likes the design and incorporation of the big well, I'm going to have a version three approved. And badge makers are usually slow, it'll be a couple months before we actually have a physical badge. But something going forward.
I'm mad, it's all real subtle of Aldous anyway, so. You didn't do bad, babe. Whatever you like, it'd be, I, I'm.
Sounds like the consensus is.
Yeah.
If you like it, go with it.
And then as the state is opening back up, my recommendation would be we kind of return to a more normal traffic patrol. I talked to Sheriff Ketter, they're going to hold off just a little bit longer, not due to COVID, but due to the backlog of the courts. Running everything through district court, he doesn't want to overflow them with traffic citations. So for his department, he's going to wait a couple more weeks, but he didn't have any objection to us going back through and doing more normal traffic stops. Still will be a little bit, not going to stop for everything we were stopping before, especially equipment violations and things like that. But just these speeds, go back to kind of what we were stopping at before, which typically I stopped about ten miles an hour over the speed limit.
When you arrest somebody, do you take them over here to the county jail?
Yes.
And do they, does the jail charge us for that, or how does that work?
They do not, because we run all of our charges through district court. Through municipal court, we only do traffic infractions at this time. So that's just like speeding, running red light, things like that. Anything criminal, even traffic criminal, like driving while suspended, any misdemeanors, those go over there, and so we do not get billed for jail time because the court gets restitution out of that.
Very good.
This might be a question for what you and Mick. On city street signs, is there a distance they have to be back from the curb? The reason I'm asking is the stop sign coming. The reason I'm asking is the stop sign coming from the south by the school at Garfield and Main Street. I was going south Saturday morning, and there was a semi coming into town. Never made an attempt to stop, because I was setting that stop sign, went on by, watched the road mirror, and it blew out onto it, but you can't see it. There's a tree right there. Is there a certain distance they have to be off the curb?
In town, a lot of it's left up to the city. There is guidelines on how it is. On the highway, it's all regulated by KDOT, where it has to be where they say it goes. That stop sign I have noticed is kind of a, you can't see it till you're right on top of it. Couple options for that would be relocation, so it's more visible, trimming the trees, or if they make bigger stop signs, or even a flashing light.
It's not the first time I've seen this happen. Last summer, it was a week truck leaving town going south out of town, never made an attempt to stop. And it used to take a bound through out of summer. Is it at Garfield? Yes. Right at the corner of the school there, where there were trees.
The old south coming.
He was headed north.
He was going north.
Yeah, there's a tree right there.
That northbound stop sign is probably seen right on top of it.
The tree hadn't come out, because it was really bad a couple years ago. Naturally gone.
I don't know whether they can't see it, or it's just an issue that they feel like schools are not sessionable.
In my experience, if I issued a traffic citation for that stop sign, if someone challenged it in municipal court, it would be overturned because that stop sign is obstructed, or you can't see it.
Well, then that's what I was asking is, or something that we could do, talk to school, or we could do to get it more visible?
That'd be something we'd have to work on with Mick, see if we can get it so it's more visible, or add a different, like a bigger stop sign to it.
It was the time of morning, if school had been open, the week kids might be crossing there and, you know. There's some other multiple issues go along with it we talked about years ago, with all the kids.
But yeah, we can look into that and address that.
I'm just curious, you know.
I agree, that sign is very hard to see.
Any other questions for Chief Webb?
A while back, I think I heard the Sheriff's Department was talking about putting in the radar signs, the speed signs. Is that still a project that's happening?
They have the signs. I think Sheriff Ketter was kind of held off just because of COVID, and the administrative staff have been working at home just in case one of them got sick.
Gotcha.
We had talked to public works about putting in the signs. We're gonna put a post, like a metal post, on both the east and west sides of town, and then they'll have one sign that they'll move periodically, so sometimes it'll be eastbound, sometimes it'll be westbound.
Gotcha.
And then they'll have a second one that they're gonna rotate between Havilland Mall and Bill as well. They do have the signs now, and they have been programmed. It's just a matter of when they decide to put them up.
Gotcha.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Moving along, we do, whoop, governing body comments. Any of those tonight? Hearing none, we'll move along. We do have one executive session scheduled tonight for matters of non-executive personnel. 20 minutes has been requested.
I'd make a question if you want to executive session for non-executive personnel until 7:35.
Second. It's been moved to second to go into executive session until 7:35. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Are in executive session.
Are in executive session. Are in executive session.
Yeah, no. Not used to that. Not used to that.
...